I'd like to call the District Two Twenty Eight Regular Board Meeting to order. Can I get roll call please?
Mrs. Gleason here. Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Campworth.
Here.
Mrs. List.
Here.
Mrs. Sterns. Mr. Whitcomb.
Here.
Mrs. Ressler.
Here. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one liberty, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
First item is our public hearing. Item two point one, our public hearing concerning the staff recommendations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Dr. Gottes.
Also pertains to the staffing resolution with notices of non-renewal. At this time, I would ask Ms. Gleason to please read the resolution.
Resolution authorizing reemployment of certified staff for the twenty-three, twenty-four school term, plus dismissal notices, resignations, and retirements. Whereas the Board of Education has received recommendations from members of the administration concerning the numbers of teachers and educational support personnel needed to be employed in the school districts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school term. And whereas this Board of Education has received recommendations from members of this administration concerning the subject areas' needs and corresponding teacher positions of this district for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education, Bremen Community High School District Two Twenty Eight, Cook County, Illinois as follows. Section one, that the following staff on contractual continued service shall be reemployed for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term. Jamila Adibison Mason through Renee Younger. Section two, that the following first-year probationary teachers shall be reemployed for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term and placed on second-year probationary status. Celeste Barbin through Ryan Whitfield. Section three, that the following second-year probationary teachers be reemployed for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term and placed on the third-year probationary status. Carrie Cash through Michael Young. Section four, that the following third-year probationary teachers be reemployed for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term and placed on fourth-year probationary status. Samantha Bio through Camille Afford. Section five. That the following fourth-year probationary teachers be reemployed and placed on tenure for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school term. Jessica Bogus through Roger Young. Section six, that the tenured teachers as listed be honorably dismissed effective at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term for the following reasons. A, declining enrollment. B, teachers returning from leaves. C. And fluctuations in subject areas as needed. None. Section seven, that the following fourth-year probationary teachers hereby be dismissed at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term due to a decision of this Board of Education to discontinue particular types of teaching services or for the reasons included in notices approved by the Board of Education. None. Section eight. That the following third-year probationary teachers, staff hereby be dismissed at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term. None. Section nine, that the following second-year probationary teachers hereby be dismissed at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term. None. Section ten, that the following first-year probationary teachers are dismissed at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term. None. Section eleven, that the following part-time and long-term substitute teachers are dismissed at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school term or the effective date as outlined in their individual employment agreements. Arwa Ali through Gloria Varmada. Section twelve, that the following resignations, retirements, leaves be accepted on the effective date as listed. Bernetta Allison, Amanda Ashmush, Marie Carr, Patricia Godet, Kathleen McNeely, Nancy Newman, Mark Moberg, Denise Poston, Jonathan Punk, Erica Stotts, Bruce Torino. Section thirteen, that the President of the Board of Education is directed to sign all required letters of dismissal notices and cause the school district administration to send such notices to each person requiring the same by certified mail and personal delivery. Section fourteen, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public hearing concerning the staffing recommendations?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion or no comments from the public, I will go ahead and close the floor to public section concerning the staffing recommendations for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Can I motion to approve the resolution and notices of non-renewal?
I am moved to approve the resolution authorizing the reemployment of teachers and certificated support personnel for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and notices of dismissal, resignations, leaves, and retirements.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason. Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Okay, just making sure. All right. So that covers items two point one and two point two, correct?
Yes, moved.
All right, moving on to section three, our coordinated approval. Can I get a motion to approve the February twenty-first, twenty-three, regular enclosed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Gleason. Aye. Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the March second, twenty-twenty-three special enclosed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Can I get a motion to approve the March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three committee the whole enclosed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Whitcomb.
Aye.
Mrs. List.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth.
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler.
Aye. Moving on to comments from the public. Do we have any public comments?
We do. Mrs. Ressler. Crystal Bayer.
Bayer.
Bayer, excuse me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Crystal Bayer. I'm the new library director for Markham Public Library. And this year, we have a really special program going where we can have two shopping events that are totally free to young ladies attending prom or junior prom or any other spring dance on April fifteenth and April twenty-second at City Hall, not at the library. That's a new change. At City Hall, we will be hosting these free shopping events. We will have dresses and shoes and jewelry and accessories. Watkins are welcome. It's from ten to four on the fifteenth and ten to five on the twenty-second. So just keep to promote our program.
Do you have a flyer? Can we have that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Any other comments from the public? All right, moving on to our superintendent report. Dr. Sikora.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. I just want to throw some congratulations out to Ms. Jenny Reed, her teachers, and of course, the wonderful students that performed District Fine Arts Fest this past Saturday. It was amazing pieces of art, artwork, sculpture. And not only did our bands and choirs perform, but we also had theater schools participate as well. So just overall, a very positive event. And then finally, and thank you students for being here today. We're looking forward to your presentation later. But wish everyone a happy and rest for spring break next week. And just a quick reminder as well that the force will be shut down for spring break due to the power work that we're going to get all that installed. So hopefully everyone stays healthy and may get to a nice, good, good spring break.
Thank you. Moving on to our FOIA request.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act request. Katie Smizer from NBC Five Chicago, Matamundo, Chicago, requested all materials, files, and documents we have concerning former swim culture reports. This request has been completed. That's all.
Thank you. Moving on to our principal reports.
I guess I drew the short straw, don't hurt, you know? I just actually have a few updates and then a few calendar dates that I hope you can either jot down tonight or I'll definitely make sure that Dr. Sikora gets these dates to share with you. First of all, our baseball and softball teams are actually playing this evening. I'm waiting, awaiting the results. But our baseball team had their first game the other night and they won nine to three against Romiaville. And we wish them the best as they head to Gulf Shores, Alabama, to play in a spring break tournament. So just a great opportunity for our kids, our coaches. They always do really well down there. Our band, our jazz band, is set to play at the Tinley Park Convention Center at an event that Dr. Sikora has invited principals, buildings, parents to attend. So they're always a highlight. So I like to throw out kudos to our band anytime I can get that out there. But as far as dates go, the Taste of Tinley that I talked to you guys about is set Wednesday, April twenty-sixth. It does start at five-thirty. Please feel free to come and meet our different staff members from the different departments that will be whipping up all kinds of different delicacies for you. You'll also have a chance to vote for who performed the best. Hats off to my partner in crime, Randy Cowenholm over here, who really does a great job in organizing all of that. Our Senior Honors Night, I can't even believe we're talking about Senior Honors Night, but it's Thursday, May fourth. We'd love to have you also in attendance. And really looking forward to, if you're an early riser and you're looking for some breakfast. Every year, my outstanding teachers get up bright and early in the morning and they cook breakfast for all of our SAT test takers. So on April twelfth, probably about six-thirty a.m., we usually have between twenty, twenty-five of our staff members that come and cook breakfast for all of our junior test takers just to make sure that they're on campus, they're there early. We have some music playing, food in the belly, trying to get them ready to take that all-important test. Again, hats off to all of my outstanding staff members who very selflessly get up and make sure that their students are in the best position that they can be to take that test. And lastly, and I kind of wrote my notes on the back of it. I had a little moment today because I'm holding in my hand one of our graduation tickets. And I guess I didn't realize it's the sixtieth graduation of Tinley Park High School on May seventeenth. And I guess my moment took place when I realized I'd been here as an employee for thirty-one of them. So I guess I surpassed the fifty percent mark. So again, you're always obviously invited to graduation and I hope I see you at the other events that we're going to have as we close out the school year. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I just have two quick pieces that I wanted to touch on over at the Delta Academy that's going on to kind of end our school year. Last month, we had asked two of our parent professionals, we kind of tasked them with starting up a new intervention and a tutor center. We call it Drake. But to start our learning center for our students, just to see what the engagement would be if we tried a new intervention for our kids, just to implement something different. I'm very happy to report that we've been in it for at least a month now and we are seeing students who are in this program and are attending it regularly have seen an increase of eight point seven percent progress on a daily basis. So it's been huge Jasmine Tolbert and Mike Clemson and the two paras who have kind of volunteered to take this underway and have been pretty flexible in trying some new things with these kids, giving them some more one-on-one support and just a different space in which to work. And it's really proving to be successful for our kids and has had a great turnout so far. So very proud of them and all the work they're doing there. The second piece, really trying to identify students right now, especially as we're getting closer and closer to graduation. We have eighty-two students right now that we are in fifth year are going to graduate. We surveyed them. Dana Doverbitz, our new school counselor over at Delta, has been working with them to try and firm up plans post-secondary as well. We have fifty-six students who have identified out of our eighty-two that are graduating. They do plan on attending a two- or a four-year college program and we're happy to announce that ten of them have already been accepted to colleges of their choosing. So, thank you. Thank you. So she just got back today. She took the students to, took twelve students to the electricians unit, union in Alsup. And she took the other students from the Paul Mitchell, where is it? Right, Paul Mitchell last month. So she's really trying to also push out students into the trades in different fields as well and building connections with our community to have them have a foot in the door when they leave with us. So we're going to keep that up until the school year wraps up. That's it. Thank you.
Hello, Happy Spring. From Oak Forest High School, I just want to tell you about a couple of things that have happened already. We had the world language induction a few weeks ago. Interesting to see how far we've come because we had both the students that were inducted last year and the students that were inducted this year all present because I had actually forgotten that last year we couldn't do it in person. So that was a really nice event for the students who've been involved in it for the last year, just to recognize them and their families as well. So the world language induction happened. Then, as Dr. Sikora mentioned, we had the Fine Arts Festival last Saturday. Great performances by the jazz band and the choir and the art students. But a special shout out to our junior high students who were also in attendance, the bands, the choirs, and then even the students that submitted artwork. Today is Crazy Sock Day at Oak Forest High School. The Crazy Sock Day, they certainly were fashion statements throughout the building and that was for recognition of Downsend Awareness Day. Tomorrow night, we have a classical concert choir at seven o'clock if anyone is able to attend. And then on Friday, we're doing a special eighth-period assembly. Nothing better than assembly on the day before spring break. And we're going to have, it's a special fundraiser for one of our former students who unfortunately lost her battle with cancer. Julia's Legacy of Hope. It's a fundraiser for that organization. And it will be Students Can Pay to get out of their eighth-period class, to come down. And we have a special thing going on at Oak Forest High School. We have a faculty jazz, jam band, faculty jam band. And they will be playing. And then we will also have the student faculty basketball game happening. So some excitement on Friday afternoon if anyone's looking for something to do. Last thing I want to mention because it will happen before our next meeting is that Oak Forest, for the first time, will be hosting a Ramadan Iftar dinner. And that is going to be on April twelfth. We are asking that people pre-register to come and attend that. There will be lots of different food and just a lot of recognition around what Ramadan is all about, reaching out to students who don't necessarily understand the significance of the fasting and the Ramadan holidays. So we'll be hosting that for the first time and hopefully for many years to come. And that's on April twelfth. There's a pre-registration. Anyone can just let me know if they'd like to attend. It's pretty fancy. You gotta scan a QR code, but I can certainly handle that for anyone that needs some assistance. So that's all from Oak Forest High School. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Some news from Hillcrest. So Hillcrest and Bremen, some students from Hillcrest and Bremen currently have some of their artwork on display at the Museum of Science and Industry. It is a part of the Black Creativity Art Exhibition. It's an exhibit that shows dynamic works from professional and amateur artists from around the country. And they touted themselves as the longest-running exhibit for African-American art in the country. And it's been going since nineteen seventy. So the student work will be on display till the end of April, I believe, April twenty-third. A few things that we've done in the building recently for recognition and some social-emotional learning. On Wednesday, March first, we had what we called Freshman Academy Wind Down Wednesday. So it's a school improvement day. And usually, you know, you get through February, it's kind of tough with the weather and the darkness and things like that. So we enabled all of our freshmen as part of the freshman academy to sort of focus on winding down. So there were board games, some physical activities in the gym, music, team-building activities, things like that. So the students were able to kind of go wherever they felt most comfortable with and we got some really good feedback on it. One of the teachers wrote, the students loved this day. They were truly able to relax and socialize. And it was nice for some students who wouldn't or don't necessarily talk to each other, play games, talk with one another, things like that. And then the following week, on March eighth, we held our first-ever Ascend Awards. These were from the dean's office, basically celebrating students who have made huge improvements in behavior or academics, attendance, those types of things. We had that in the cafeteria. That was a real good event as well. Boys' basketball recently wrapped up their season, unfortunately, with a loss in the super sectional. But they ended up regional and sectional champions this year. Their overall record was twenty-nine and four. Two of our seniors, Bryce Tillery, one of them, ended up South Town All-Area, Illinois Basketball Coaches Association Second Team All-State. He was all-conference and he was the conference player of the year. And then Darian Baker was Sun Times All-Area, All-State Second Team for the Sun Times, South Town All-Area, AP All-State Second Team, Illinois Basketball Coaches Association First Team, and he was all-conference as well. So they had a great season. One last thing that I just encountered today. Our college and career counselor, who's presented to you guys a few times, Brandy Mathis, had South Suburban College and their barber school come in. And we kind of set it up with some tables where some of our kids could actually get their hair cut today and also listen to, you know, what goes on in terms of the barber school. And they'll soon be starting the cosmetology school there as well. So we saw that some of our students were somewhat hesitant to get their hair cut in front of other students. So I talked to the director of the program and I said, you know, I know that your barbers need to get a lot of hours in and some of our students are a little bit shy about getting haircuts in front of other people. You think we can work out something where maybe next fall you can come and give our students that are in need or that need some haircuts, you know, kind of work that out? She said, we'll be there every two weeks. So they're going to come every two weeks, starting next year. And, you know, we struggle. We've talked at length about hats and hoods and things like that. And what I've come to see is students aren't necessarily wearing hoods in school because they're trying to be defiant. It's because they're embarrassed because they haven't gotten their haircut for a while. So hopefully, we'll be able to kind of kill two birds with one stone, get the kids some haircuts, get the, you know, the barber school people some hours and everything will be good. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to keep it somewhat short because I have a group here that is really excited to present and share with you. Couple exciting happenings that we have going on at Bremen, most recently and coming up this week. This week, we also are hosting our senior faculty basketball game on Friday. It's a fundraiser for our senior class towards their class gift that they give back to Bremen High School at the end of the year. So I know our students are very excited. That's how we will roll into spring break as well with a two o'clock assembly on Friday. So you're welcome to join us. We recently had thirty Bremen criminal law students attend a drones and dogs at South Suburban College. A police FAA expert demonstrated the use of drones in law enforcement and students also were able to interact with the police dogs to learn about how they're used for drug detection and also for therapeutic purposes when police departments are going through and interviewing those that are involved with crimes, working with young children. So our students really thought that was pretty neat. We also hosted a Pi Day fundraiser. Sarah Ho for our math department supervisor put this together. It is a new event here at Bremen High School, but it was an exciting way for us to spend the day. Knut's, Ken Keeler at Knut's, who is amazing and takes care of us all the time, donated pizzas. And then Sarah organized it so that our teachers could purchase pizza slices throughout the day. All of that money is going towards a math scholarship for a graduating senior. So we are excited about that as well. And obviously, want to thank Ken from Knut's for always hooking us up so that we can raise funds for our students. Our FCCLA students recently participated in a skate-a-thon as part of their service learning project to raise money for the family of a District Two Twenty Eight staff member whose son is currently battling leukemia. Nine of these FCCLA superstars have also qualified for the state competition that they're going to be preparing for that'll be held in Springfield in early April. Last but not least, we've got Mr. Strine here and our DECA program. DECA recently competed at the state competition and we have a handful of students that have also qualified for nationals. So I'm not going to steal his thunder. They're very excited to share a little bit about the DECA program with you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Rosensky. My name is Todd Strine. I am the DECA advisor for Bremen High School's chapter. These young professionals here are going to give you a short presentation on what DECA is, the accomplishments that we have done so far this year, and things to look forward to in the future. So I'd like to recognize this is our executive board. Social media director, Dulce Cervantes. We have junior community service director, Andrea Roscoe. Senior secretary, Gerardo Mondragon. Freshman treasurer, Anna Jones. Sophomore vice president, Yasson De La Rosa. And our senior president, Evelyn Roman. Evelyn, why don't you go ahead?
Hello, my name is Evelyn Roman and I am the president of Bremen High School's DECA chapter. Now you may be wondering, what exactly is DECA? DECA is a business-based organization with a mission to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. With competitive events like role plays, career-based tests, business proposals, and presentations, DECA works to improve its members' interpersonal and presentation skills. Our members work hard to achieve big things through DECA and we will be guiding you through each aspect of our Bremen DECA chapter. And now to our secretary, Gerardo Mondragon.
Hello, my name is Gerardo Mondragon and I am the secretary of our DECA program here at Bremen. I manage the membership, attendance, and participation of our DECA program. During twenty-twenty, our DECA membership plummeted down to about twenty members along with decreased attendance, participation because of the pandemic. Since then, we have tripled our membership and have steadily increased participation and attendance during all of our DECA events and activities. We have made significant progress and we hope to continue on with our success with DECA. And I will be handing it over down to Andrea Roscoe.
Hello, my name is Andrea Roscoe and I am the community service director here for our Bremen DECA chapter. I am pleased to announce the work that my fellow DECA mates have made this year. This year, Bremen had another successful food drive where we donated thousands of pounds of canned food. Approximately eighty percent of our DECA members participated in collecting, packaging, weighing, and distributing food. This year, we also began our bottle-to-bench drive. We have collected three fifty-five-gallon drums full of bottle caps and continue to collect more in hopes to accomplish our goal of creating an eco-friendly recycled bench. Now, I'll pass it to our chapter's vice president, Yasson De La Rosa.
Hello, my name is Yasson De La Rosa and I am the vice president for our Bremen DECA chapter. Apart from helping in our successful food drive and our bottles-to-benches drive, in the month of December, we hosted a DECA-tastic scavenger hunt. This scavenger hunt was used to help students get to know a little bit more about DECA. We put QR codes around the school as well as implementing it in our morning announcements. This QR code led to a Google forum in which students were either to answer a DECA trivia question or a holiday trivia question. To make this more exciting for our students, we decided to offer prizes. Third place received a ten-dollar Dunkin' gift card. Second place received a fifteen-dollar Starbucks gift card. And first place received a twenty-five-dollar gift certificate to Los Arapces, a Mexican restaurant located here in Melocca. We were so excited when we saw students searching for the QR code or asking other students who had already found them where they were. We couldn't have really done this without them. And now I will be moving on with our treasurer, Anna Jones.
Hello, my name is Anna Jones and I am the treasurer. I'll explain, I'll explain what DECA has given so far. For the MDA.
Muscular Dystrophy Association.
We donated three thousand to the MDA through sales and our own DECA school store. That means as a chapter, we are able to send three different kids affected by the MDA to a summer camp designed to accommodate their needs.
Hello, my name is Dulce Cervantes. I am our social media director for DECA. Our DECA chapter takes great joy in posting about our activities throughout this year. We are currently posting on Snapchat, TikTok, Instagram, and Facebook. We are currently posting on Snapchat, TikTok, Instagram, and Facebook. Through these social media apps, we are able to interact with our members, their families, and other DECA chapters. During our DECA month in November, we had over seventy-five percent of our DECA members participate in this challenge. We are also, we also participated in the Illinois Snapchat takeover. This challenge is where Illinois, DECA, and Trust their Snapchat password to our iConnect representative to showcase our activities for that day.
As Dulce mentioned, we have an iConnect representative. As the president, I had the pleasure of serving as this year's iConnect representative. In order to improve connections between chapters, aside from social media, Illinois DECA has iConnect, which is a program where a representative submits various proofs of chapter activities so representatives from other chapters can view and share ideas with each other. There are three levels to iConnect, bronze, silver, and gold. And this year in iConnect, we've received the silver status, which is an amazing accomplishment as it requires a lot of participation from the entire chapter. And now Andrea Roscoe.
Before my fellow officers talk about their experience at all of our DECA competitions, we wanted to share a few quotes that we received from some of our members. Natalie Perez says, "State was so much fun. I got to meet new people and gain new knowledge." Raul Castaneda says, "The college fair at the state was my favorite part. They had so many options to explore and it was a good opportunity to prepare me for my senior year." And lastly, Mary Jane Gilfoyle says, "It was an emotional experience walking up to that stage and being able to receive an award for something I worked hard for. And next year, I'll work harder to walk across that stage once more." Now, I'll pass it to our treasurer, Anna Jones, and she will speak about her experience at her first-ever competition.
Sectionals are fun experiences to me because when we study for something really hard and something they enjoy and love and learn to study, it makes the experience very smooth and competition more fun and less nerve-wracking. Now, Gerardo will talk about his experience there.
I participated at the state competition for DECA enrolled for two years and it was absolutely wonderful. I've had the opportunity to collaborate with other DECA members, make new friends, and improve my communication skills. It was an experience that I've been fortunate enough to attend and I'll never forget it. I look forward to future DECA members being able to attend state and have a wonderful experience as well as I did. And now, back to...
Nationals is the third and final level of DECA competitive events. Last year, I had the privilege of going to Atlanta, Georgia, where I competed for our school store. Atlanta was a beautiful place and I was able to meet people from all over the country and some from other parts of the world. It was an amazing experience and taught me a lot about interaction and independence with other people. The school store is one of the many prides and joys of our DECA chapter. Our management team works diligently to make sure everything is as best as can be. This year, our managers wrote papers for gold certification in retail and food operations, making it our first for retail operations and third for food operation. Our chapter was one of only two in the state to receive this recognition. Raul Castaneda, Maddox Busio, and Daniel Galvin wrote the paper for gold certification in food operations. And Mary Jane Gilfoyle, Carla Sanchez, and Xander Hustling wrote the paper for gold certification in retail operations. Mary Jane Gilfoyle, Raul Castaneda, and Carla Sanchez will be going to Orlando, Florida to present our school store to a national judge. And now to Yassim Delarosa.
This year, our DECA program had many successful events and competitions, but this couldn't have been done without the courageous students who have worked so hard. In January, we attended the South Suburban DECA sectionals. We took over sixty kids and we became the largest club at that sectionals. We saw each kid work very hard and ultimately we had twenty-seven state qualifiers. We attended ILCDC, the Illinois DECA state competition, from March second to March fourth. There, we saw each kid rehearse the role plays, study for their tests, and as well as their written projects. Ultimately, we had eight top-ten qualifiers. In the Business Solutions Project, we had Yassim Delarosa, Alina Aguilar, and Isabella Estrada. In Innovation Plan, we had Raul Castaneda. In the Integrated Marketing Campaign, we had Anna Seja and Celestis Narros. And in the Entrepreneurship Team Decision-Making, we had Andrea Roscoe and Michelle Ramos. And we are extremely proud of our two national qualifiers. Sophia Prishett took second place in the Quick Serve Restaurant Management and Yassim Delarosa took in Restaurant Food Service Management. We are extremely proud of them and wish them nothing but the best as they attend Nationals in Orlando, Florida next month. And now I will move on to our president, Evelyn Roman, as she does our closing remarks.
DECA is a program that teaches and promotes valuable skills that members will use in their futures. My freshman year, I never would have been able to present this to you all with confidence. Now, as a senior, I am proud of what I have presented and I understand I still have room to grow. I am very proud of what our chapter has accomplished this year and as I graduate, I am very excited to see what our future members contribute and learn from DECA. Thank you.
I have a quick question. First off, congratulations.
Thank you.
So glad you guys came here. I, I feel like speechless. I'm a board member by night, but I'm a business manager during daytime, so I just, well, I'm so excited, just geeked for you guys. Congratulations on everything you guys have accomplished. Can you tell me, your DECA challenge, and I, I heard like Business Solution Planner or, what is, like, what would that look like if I were to go to a competition and they told me you're gonna be part of this Business Solution Plan? What, walk me through like what that entails, what that looks like?
So, with our Business Solution Project, we have to ultimately find a local business in which we saw they had a declining problem or we just saw that they were closing our doors. Like I stated earlier in our scavenger hunt, the first-place restaurant that helped us, that was who I worked with for my Business Solution Project. They were losing clientele against competitors, so we had to find solutions in which we could promote them around our community. And we found that social media was a big place in which we could promote them. And that's basically what we presented on. We presented our tactics and then how much revenue and the return investment that we bought. And we just had to showcase how that looked throughout and how much time it took to plan out.
So, you're actually working for local businesses as part of your challenge?
It depends. So, for mine, mine, the Business Solution was a written event, but the other things that we mentioned, the role plays, those are scenarios that they're made up, but we just make them come to life.
Awesome.
There is about five written projects that the students can get involved where they actually do have to work with local businesses. And then there is even one project where the students have to own their own business and show proof of ownership.
Wow. Very cool. Thank you for sharing that with us today.
Mr. Strine, thank you for your work with the students and braves. Outstanding presentation. Very well done and very professional and you can see that you've got bright features, so keep up the great work. Really well done.
Thank you.
Very professional tip.
All right. Any other questions or comments for our principals or our DECA presenters today? We let them go. All right. Thank you, good for coming and sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. All right. Any board member reports? Do we have any board member reports? All right. Moving on to new business. Dr. Sikora, you speak to bills, identity bills, payroll, CES bills.
Absolutely. Board, item six point one is our monthly bills, identity bills, payroll, and CES bills. I am recommending those for full board approval.
So moved. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gleason, aye. Mrs. List? Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Item six point two, our bid acceptance.
Item six point two, the bid acceptance for the fire protection package of the Oak Forest Emergency Placement project this summer. Central State Automatic Sprinklers Inc. submitted a low bid of thirty-seven thousand five hundred million dollars and they are being recommended for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason, aye. And Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Six point three, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Item six point three is the renewal of Paper.co. Superintendent is recommending the purchase of a three-year contract for full board approval.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion?
Just wanna point out that this is a tutoring service. It's a great opportunity for it. It's not paper.
It's doing everything we hoped to do when we first agreed to it, so it all worth the expense.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason, aye. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Item six point four, Dr. Williams?
Item six point four is the overnight field trip request for students to attend Nationals from BPA at the end of April. This is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason, aye. Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Item six point five, Dr. Sikora?
Mrs. Russell, item six point five is our IHSA membership renewal for the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. This is for all four campuses and it's important to note that for our next year, there will not be a required payment for membership, although obviously we plan to update the state series and all the events that go on with IHSA. So, I am recommending that for full board approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason, aye. And Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Moving on to personnel recommendations, Dr. Gobbins?
Mrs. Russell, under maternity leave, Jana Anderson. Under retirement, Kerry Larson, Dana Brown, Brian Burke, Jonathan Punky, Bruce Torino, Amanda Ashmuss, Kelly Deal, and Erica. Oh, sorry, those are resignations. Under resign, no, retirements is Dana Brown and Brian Burke. Under resignations, Jonathan Punky, Bruce Torino, Amanda Ashmuss, Kelly Deal, and Erica Stotts. Under employment, Sean Douglas, Nate Vanderleest, Ashley Homware, Alex Westfall, and Jacob Agnelji. Under new positions, recommendation for occupational therapist. Approval for retirement, under retirement contracts, approved retirement contract for Dr. Corinne Williams. Approval of the retirement contract for Dr. Teresa Nolan. Approval of the retirement contract for Dr. Randy Collenholm. Improvement of retirement contract for Dr. John Kane. Approval of the retirement contract for Jane Dempsey and the approval of the retirement contract for Colin Milton. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
Second.
Moved by Ms. List, second by Mr. Whitcomb. Any discussion?
Just wanna say that this is, especially under the retirements, it's a loss. It's really, to those of you who are here, a great group of individuals who have really moved this district forward. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. List? Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.